You owe a lot of this pay taxes on it if I die. I said, because if you owe money on anything and all of a sudden money's not worth anything and you can't get nothing.
Right.
To call for you, this house is plenty big enough for four families, you need to move in, make it work. It should slide with the go south.
Hi Brittany.
Hello Chip, how are you doing?
Doing good.
Good.
Number one on the hit parade.
Okay, I will call the meeting to order. We may have another member join us, but. Well. I'll see if that happens. So we have three items on the agenda for tonight, the first of which is the Johnson's application to modify a minor subdivision plan on Sturdivant Hill Road. We have considered this application on several occasions at various meetings over the past few months. There's Henry. Hi Henry. And. Tonight's meeting is for the purpose of holding a public hearing on this application. As you will probably all remember. On this is. This application was for the Johnsons to add a one plus acre parcel of property that was a portion of a lot adjacent to them. They are requesting to add that to their their lot, merging it into a single conforming residential law. We've talked about this several times, so I don't think that I'll ask Brittany to run through it again. I think we all know what the situation is, but certainly if there are any questions or anything that we've missed, please planning board members speak up and I'm sure that that Brittany would be happy to respond. So. At this point, I will open the public hearing. And I don't know if there are members of the public who are here to speak to this application. Anyone? Okay. So the. My recollection is that the board did not identify any particular issues with this application. It was simply a matter of working through the process to take the steps to notify a butter schedule, the hearing and so forth. So that we could get to this point where we could make a decision. Brittany, was there anything you wanted to add to the discussion before we move? On.
I I don't believe so. As long as you guys have everything you need, I'm, we're all set here.
Okay, alright. So I would open it up to planning board members if you have any questions. Comments or considerations at this point. Henry.
Did, did we confirm the a butter notices went out? And if so, did we hear anything back from any of the butters?
Chip.
They did go out. Nobody got back to us. I have the receipts. Yes.
Okay.
Our neighbors did say that they got one, so it did get to our neighbors because they did let us know that they got one.
Hey, the system works.
Yes it does.
Thanks Brittany, thanks Chip.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, other questions?
Should we close the public hearing?
I take a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. And. So Noel, I would be looking for you to vote tonight because we don't have a full complement of seven.
Oh, on that, I do believe the select board approved me to be a permanent member.
Oh, they did, okay.
I haven't got confirmation, but I was told they were gonna meet.
Congratulations.
Thank you, it's an honor.
You're a lucky man.
Did you sign the five year agreement? Did that get the.
So you were sworn.
I was, yeah, I was sworn as a member.
Yeah. Alright, great. Um, okay, we have a motion and a second to close the hearing. I'll take a roll vote. Don.
Yes.
Jan.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
And Paula, yes. And I would now look for a motion on the application.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the application subject to standard conditions.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Call the roll. Don.
Yes.
Jan.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
And Paula, yes. Okay, Brittany, thank you very much for working through this this process with us.
No problem, thank you guys.
And Chip, we do need to, maybe you can give us some information and instruction. We do need to sign the plan.
We have three copies of it here in the office. It will be here in the meeting room where I'm sitting right now for signatures whenever you're available this week.
And then it needs to be recorded. Do you know that Brittany?
Um. Yeah. Yeah, we're going to go, we have a lawyer, we're gonna do the land merge and all that stuff, and then we'll do the rest of the steps to make sure it's all good to go.
So if each of you could plan to stop by the town offices soon as you're able to and add your signature to the Mylar.
So one of the standard conditions that is new is that within thirty days of. She's, Brittany should send proof of recording to this, to Chip. You'll get a receipt, I guess, from the registry of deed showing that you recorded it. We know it's.
Or we have to turn all over again, Brittany.
Oh my god. I'm done.
For clarity Paula, who needs to sign the Mylar?
Each of us.
Okay, all planning board members.
Yes.
And then I have thirty.
Eight o'clock in the morning and it will be here from eight to five the rest of the week.
And then I have thirty days to record it.
No, you have ninety days to record it.
Oh ninety, okay.
Then thirty days after you record it, send proof of recording to.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. Yep, perfect.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Brittany.
Yeah, thanks you guys. Have a great night.
You too.
You too.
Goodnight.
Bye.
You're up.
I am. The golden chair.
A second agenda item tonight is John Cushing's application to expand his existing storage business on Main Street. And as you will recall, there was some discussion early on in this process about the size of the expansion. And John's decision ultimately was to size it in order to remain under the threshold for the commercial industrial district process. So in total, it is under the existing building and the new storage building proposed. The total square footage is under 5,000, which is the threshold for the CID process. We found the application complete on the fourteenth of December. And had voted to notify butters and schedule a public hearing. So that is our purpose tonight to hold a public hearing on this application. We did also talk about waiving the site visit. Most of us travel through there with some regularity and it was easy enough to take a look at that property without scheduling a formal site visit. So I expect each of us have have seen it in one way or another, but that was the decision of the board not to hold the formal site visit. So at this point, I would open the public hearing. And John, is there anything you would like to add describing your project?
Describing it? No, unless someone has a question, I think everyone got the picture.
Okay.
I, what's that? I think, I know, I noticed on the camera, I think a few of you, I don't know if you've all been down, I know a few people stopped down to look. I guess, I don't really have anything to add to it. You know, the building's gonna stay the size it I did in the last form and you know, as far as the trees, you know, when we get it all built, you guys welcome us up down. If you think I need a few trees, I'm more than happy to put them up.
Okay. So are there any interested parties, anyone who would like to comment on the application tonight? Yes, but you give us your name?
Sure, I'm Cartica Wright. Scott and I live at eight ninety six Main Street, so we are to the right of the property that's being adjusted. And I'm just actually curious where that piece of structure is gonna be located on the property. We spent a lot of time down in the back with the dogs and love having the woods in between us and that space. We've been so fortunate to have neighbors that we have, and I'm just curious. So no concern, no upset, but just curiosity as to where that structure's gonna sit.
Okay, John, could you, could you describe the location in in terms of the property?
Sure. And just so I'm clear, if I'm in the road looking at the house, you are the one to the right?
We are, we're the one in between your property and the Camp KV property, the little white cape with the two bay garage.
Yeah, yeah, I used to call you drive, yeah.
Yes.
You guys. Well, if you go out back in your house and you look to the left, you can see the duplex that I rent. And there's a couple pine trees that are laying there. You probably know where the property line is because I had that marked out and it was marked out when they cut wood when it was a church.
Yes, absolutely, so. Go ahead.
The building is, the building from you is basically as far as it can go to the other neighbor. It's just down over the hill. If you were to walk in the parking lot between the rental and the duplex and walk out across the septic, it's right over that bank.
Okay.
Well, it's actually the furthest from your property line as it can go.
That's awesome. That's, that's fabulous. That's, that's fabulous. Again, um, having you folks as a neighbor not a problem at all. I guess, you know, there may be some increase in travel in and out, but storage facilities, generally there's not a lot of, a lot of in and out. People come in, go infrequently. So once the once the construction's done, it shouldn't be.
I know, honestly, I don't even think either neighbor will notice very much. The lights are gonna be on downhill side and they're gonna be motion lights that are actually pointed right into the door so that, you know, unless wildlife are going right by the front of the door, they should stay off. And it's, it's down in the trees where I'm really hoping that really nobody can see it. That was kind of the purpose of putting it down.
That's awesome. Thanks so much. I really appreciate you expanding on that and look forward to watching the progress.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with comments on the application?
Okay.
John. I am John. John Cushing.
Yes.
Okay, your building.
Excuse me, excuse me, we're, we're in an official meeting. You have to be recognized by the chair.
I'm sorry. Really? Fran Zambella.
Fran Zambella would like to speak.
Church Road.
Okay, please go ahead with your comment.
Go ahead Fran, you're on it.
I'm, I'm just questioning the coverage of the property. I don't know how big your property is there. And are you gonna be in the confines of the percentage of coverage on the property?
Are you saying, are you asking whether my building's within the square footage of what I'm allowed?
Right, exactly.
Yes. Yeah.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
Now this building is gonna be a hundred and eight feet by twenty six.
Yeah, I can't, it says the permit, yeah, it's twenty, I think it's twenty, twenty one by I mean, I should have brought the glasses on. Can you tell me what that is?
One oh eight by twenty.
Yeah, one oh eight by twenty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, well, my, my concern is from Route seventeen is I drive by. Am I gonna say this still?
Shouldn't say it at all.
Okay, so the property extends away behind.
Well, the property extends, I can't even move the footage of it, but it extends and it goes down over a hill. And then that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks Fran.
Fran's good.
Any other comments?
So Paula, yeah, I have a question. And I was not here for the December fourteenth meeting when it was accepted as complete, so I was going back through the application tonight, just trying to figure out what is on file for erosion control and stormwater management. I thought maybe somebody could enlighten me.
Okay. That was a piece that, as I recall, we went back and asked for some supplemental information on, so Don, I, Chip or John or together, maybe you could describe what the submission was.
Well, I, I sent in a form, you know, a written statement that where the erosion control was going, there's gonna be silt fence, there's gonna be a two foot berm of erosion control on the downhill side around the whole area being worked. There is a culvert going across the bottom of the road with a catch pool basin in it. Just so, you know, if we have a massive storm, the water that comes in will be, it'll have what they call a spreader head on the back of the, on the back of that containment that spreads the water out. So what is it? Goes into the wood, it's not in one, one big funnel, it just kind of fans it out as it goes out into the woods. If you have your packet, there's one page that he's done, kind of like a drawing that you can look for in your packet. Kind of where ground, just there.
It's there.
It's not engineered.
So I'm looking at the drawing in the packet. And I guess I still need you to to talk me through it because I'm not exactly sure what you're referring to.
Well, I'm DEP certified, number one. Number two, just so that you know, anything on the downhill side, you gotta catch all water so that any sediment gets caught. So as far as DEP's concerned, there has to be a two foot berm of erosion control and it has to be put in areas on the downhill side that catch that wall. I do a lot of stuff on the lakes, especially in Fayette, so I'm used to, used to working with the DEP and what they want and how they want. You know, I just have to add that, because no matter how I put it on the paper, I look at engineered stuff and I put in engineered stuff all the time. It, it, you know, it looks pretty, but it doesn't exactly tell you where or how it's going. All I can tell you is that everything on the downhill side of the road, all that water that passes by, anything that I'm doing, anything that I disturb, has to have some kind of a containment. And the DEP requires that you have usually two rules of, or two parts of containment. And you go by jobs all the time that have silt fence and that's all they have. This is gonna have silt fence and it's gonna have a two foot berm of erosion control, because by DEP standards, you need two. That's what this job will have and it will have it on all the downside areas. And it will stay there until it's complete and until anything that needs to grow grass is growing and green, because that's how it has to be done. So if you're looking for where it needs to go, I mean, this is kind of a rough drawing and it's, it's like I said, even if it was done with a contractor, they, they, they just give you squiggly lines telling you where to put it. Everything on the downhill side, anywhere that there's gonna be running water that's going to get outside the containment of where I'm working, will have a two foot berm of erosion control in silt fence. And it will be, and it will be monitored. So if I, let's say we have a pouring storm, if they're bad enough, I have to go down during the storm. If they're not that bad, I usually go down the next day just to check them, make sure, you know, I've gotten on jobs where it's gone through one, but the other one has held it. You have to repair the first one, dig all the stuff off the second one. It's just normal practice for someone that is doing this type of stuff.
So that all sounds good, but I, I just don't see what you're describing to me here. I don't see where that is in the application materials. I mean, I did see that you're certified and that's great, but you know.
Well, if you, if you look at this, this nice little crappy drawing I have.
Do you see this?
That's it.
Everywhere on the downhill side, it'll tell you on, it'll tell you on, you know, the, the explanation of what each piece is. There's rip wrap, there's a culvert, there's the grading of the parking lot. There's the erosion control. That erosion control is everywhere on the downhill side, where you can't see that, but it's everywhere on the downhill side to the plunge pool. Everything that's uphill, the plunge pool has to come down this hill. So I don't need anything there until it gets to the plunge pool.
Don, do you see this? Did you see this in the packet?
So I'm looking, I must be looking at the original drawing because I'm not seeing that drawing.
The original drawing didn't have it in it. It didn't have a lot of things that you guys needed, which is why we had the second meeting, because apparently I was sleeping on the first one. So the second meeting, we drew this up and everyone else has seen it, but you might not have it.
So there, there isn't, John, there's no, there's not a narrative that accompanies the drawing. It's just the drawing in the application, correct?
Well, it's written in here somewhere.
He said in a, in a letter, expanded erosion control plan will install two feet of erosion control and silt fence where needed slash required. Yeah, and then he had, then he had the drawing. The story.
We discussed it at the last meeting.
Yeah.
So Don, is there, is there, is there something in particular that you're looking for in addition?
Just making sure that those items, I mean, I think what John's described here is fine. It's just a matter of, I didn't see it, so I'm, my apologies if I don't have the right drawing in front of me.
Are there other, other questions or comments for John? Jack, I know that you had mentioned, we had had a little bit of conversation about visual buffer and if and how we wanted to address that. And one, one thought was to condition it in such a fashion that we would wait to see what the actual visual impact was before we required anything in terms of planting or vegetation. So that's one, that's one possible approach.
John, when are you expecting to build this, have it finished?
Well, I'm expecting to start in a couple of weeks. I was actually hoping to have the show up, but you know, you know, under my own not having things paid correctly. It's taking a little longer, but so it's all gonna be in the weather. You know, it snows every day, I won't be building it, because obviously.
What if we said a year from now, which would be in the winter, when there wouldn't be leaves on the trees? We would, we would take a look at it to see whether it's screened from view. And at that point, might require additional plantings to screen it from view.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm, I'm totally okay with that. That doesn't bother me at all. I don't you know, like I said, putting it down back was, was part of my plan, so I wouldn't have to stare. It's not like you know, it's just even when the church was there before, I mean, when I get enough money, we're gonna side it, because I don't care for the siding that's on the backside of it. I don't, I don't wanna dump. And I don't think, I think it looks better than it did when I bought it and it's getting there. It's like the duplex, this summer someone's supposed to vinyl the underneath of the porch on the backside, because you know, from the road when you drive by, it looks like a two year old did it. Because it's not finished, but that will be finished this year. And so the building that is going in, you know, I want it down back because I really don't want to stare at it. I think it looks a lot better than it did. It looks decent and it's, it's a nice looking piece of property and and if, you know, if the roof is showing and you guys don't really care to see it, I'll plant some blue spruce out there, something that's green all year round and you know, I got the equipment. It didn't take me very long.
We'll just have a condition that next January or February, we'll review it for for its screening for the road. That makes sense, Paula?
I think so.
Okay.
Others, you have thoughts on that? I think it makes sense.
We close the.
Are there other comments or questions? If not, I'd look for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to close the hearing. Further discussion? I can broach. Don?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
And Paula, yes. And I would entertain a motion on the application.
I'll make a motion to approve the application as amended subject to standard conditions and that the site be reviewed next January or February of twenty three. Or to determine whether or not additional plantings are needed to screen the project from. To screen the project from public view.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So just looking for some clarification, Jack, on the. The inspection as to who and how that happens.
Oh, the plant, it would come before the planning board. For a review.
So that, the, the trigger is just that, um. Chip would remind us or whoever's there.
Right. Somebody has to remind us.
When you drive by, it'll remind you if you don't like the looks. Easy.
Okay, so it would be worded like the. In January of twenty-three, um. The planning board. Will. Evaluate visual impact or however you want to describe it.
Yeah, that's.
And we'll make a determination about whether or not. Buffer plantings are necessary, something along those lines.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, further discussion? Call for vote. John?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
And Paula, yes. Okay, thank you very much, John.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
You too.
So. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Okay, um. Next on the agenda is, um. The Morash application. Um, and as you'll recall, we have considered this, um, at a number of meetings. Over the past. Year and a half, I believe. Um, what we have before us tonight is a revised application from the Morashes. Um. For their demolition of the existing structure on their property on Miranda Cook Lake. And the construction of a new year-round, uh. Three thousand two hundred ninety square foot. Uh. Residence. Um. We last considered this last spring, um, and, uh, opened a public hearing on the application at that point. Uh, there was a fair amount of discussion about the proposal. A number of concerns were raised. And, um. We had left the public hearing open, uh, in the spring when we left, uh, when we left that application. Um, one of the issues that was identified, uh, was the fact that. The road setback had not been met. And I know that a portion of the revised application, um, addresses the location of the road and I'll. I'll ask the Morashes to describe that for us in a bit more detail. Um. Just as a reminder to planning board members, um, this particular application, um, falls within the, uh. Non-conforming structure portion of the land use ordinance. And, um. Because the existing structure is being demolished and removed. Um. The ordinance requires that, um, reconstructing or replacing it, uh, must meet. Requirements, the setback standards, uh, to the greatest practical extent. So the greatest practical extent standard is at play here. And in addition, um, in, uh, section four of article three. Um, are the provisions relating to, um, expansion, um, of, of such a structure. And so those, uh, those apply as well. Um. Our purpose tonight is to hear from the Morashes about the proposal, uh, the modifications that they've made. And, uh, to. Continue, um. Our conversation about this and whether or not we have all of the information necessary, um, to proceed. Um, if we determine that we do. Uh, the next step would be for us to go ahead and renotice, um, a public hearing. And to provide that opportunity for interested parties to comment on the revised application, um, before we, um. Further consider the merits of the application and, uh, and make a decision. So, uh, tonight's purpose again is, is to review the information we have that the Morashes are presenting. Um, in their revised application and, um, to get any questions out on the table that anyone might have. So I would, um, uh, turn to Mr. Mrs. Morash and ask if you could describe for us, um. Your current application and the revisions that you've made, uh, to the one that we had seen previously.
Well, evening, um. So the revision to the existing application is. Uh, in, uh, discussion with our neighbors, the Hueys. Um. The road that, uh, slash driveway that accesses. Our two, two properties, uh. Is, uh. Needs to be worked on and with the, uh. Uh, looking at that, exactly what we want to do with it, uh, part of that is to take some of the, uh, straight shot down on the lake. Uh, and move the road over a little bit, um, and improve the ditching. Around it and make the road a three hundred and sixty-five day a year road. Uh, presently it's not, uh, there's probably. Uh, I don't know, six or seven weeks a year that. It's, uh. Pretty mucky and not drivable really. Um, unless you want to redo the road every year, um, which we don't, and we also want to improve it for, um. Runoff, any runoff into the lake. Uh, with that discussion with the Hueys, um. That then moves, uh, what was a non-conformance to the fifty foot setback. Uh. To the center of the road, uh. Over a bit and allows, um, if you have your drawings in front of you, if you look at. Uh. Sheet A zero-two. We now have a fifty foot setback to the rear of the, the structure. So with, uh, the fact that the, the, uh, the structure itself. Uh. Is started a bit back from the seventy-five foot mark. We have the, uh, just under the fifteen hundred square feet, uh, allowable, uh, with a pre-existing structure at fourteen feet from the water. Uh, we now meet all the setbacks, uh, per the, uh, town of, uh, Reed Fields ordinance. Questions?
So ju- just to make sure I understand the, the, um. Um. The revision that you've made is, um. To the location of the road with respect, um, to the house, right? That's the.
That's correct.
Okay.
I had a question about the road, um. So ordinance contains some standards about roads. In article eight. Section nineteen F. And also in article ten. Road standards. And is there any information in the packet that you've supplied that? Shows that. What you're doing meets those standards? Are there any specifications of what you're doing with the road and? That it meets the town standards for private roads?
I, I believe it does.
Where in the packet?
In front of you.
What page is it?
Uh, A zero-ten or A zero-seven, excuse me. Shows the road.
It's zero-seven.
Uh, those are sections through the, uh, rain gardens as well.
What, what is that? It just shows the road, but, um, I know it shows the road, but. We have standards for. The slope of the road in certain areas. If you look at. Those two sections I refer to.
Yeah, this is a pre-existing road, Jack.
I thought you were moving the road.
We're, we're moving it over a bit. That's it. It's a pre-existing road.
Right. So you're reconstructing the road or building a new road, right?
We're not building a new road. We're improving the road.
But the road's going to be in a new spot.
Uh, about. About, uh, what's the length of that improvement? Uh. Justin?
You're, you're muted.
I'll pull it up here on the Revit. It's probably fifty to seventy-five feet.
I guess we'll have to figure out whether this, whether. The land use ordinance standards apply to. Reconstruction or movement of a new, movement of an old road to a new location.
If you look at the, uh. Notes on. Plot A zero-two, Jack. Um, note four.
Note four, maybe zero-two.
There's a. Also a diagram of the relocated section of Mayor, Mayor Road. There's also a description of, uh. Square footage of that piece and other information.
Yeah, I.
I'm not sure it meets what you're looking for. I'm just saying that's what it means. About it.
Um, well, maybe, um, Morashes can take a look at. Article eight. And article ten dealing with road standards. I haven't looked to see whether, when you're building. Part of a new road, when you're making a new road or taking an old road and putting it in a new location. Whether you have to comply with these standards.
Any, or any, anything on Chip?
Excuse me?
An- any, uh. It said any light on that?
No, not right now.
We might have to ask the road commissioner. I'm not sure.
Does the town of Reedfield have a road commissioner?
Yeah, the town manager.
It's the town manager. So we can, um, we can follow up on that, but I would certainly, um. Echo what Jack said, um, uh, you should also. Uh, take a look at those sections as well, um, they, they may apply in terms of the actual construction of that section of road. Um, but we will take a, we'll take a closer look at that and, um. The applicability. Of the standards in this situation.
Again, you know, the, the, the length of that road, uh, or slash driveway. Um, is. Uh, second here. We are in, in, you know, improving of, of the entire road is. You know, uh, so we can drive it and then, you know. We're trying to make the, the road less, uh. Straight down the hill. Which has been a problem with water runoff and such. So we're trying to improve that.
And what I'm saying is the town has standards for private roads. That maybe meet what you're doing, but it should be done in conformity, I think, with the town standards for roads, for private roads.
Yeah, Jack, we could be, uh, we could amend the application and add a section detail through the road profile just to, uh, ensure. Um, that it will be both your standard.
Okay.
But I'm sure it will be anyways, you know, the geotextile fabric, uh, uh, twelve inches of, uh, eighty-three is. Double reading document.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, um. Then, well, in two sections in article three, section four on non-compromising structures, there's. Section dealing with removal of trees to relocate a structure. And how many trees you can remove and replanting requirements and also. In article eight, section nineteen D. Um, you're clearing trees outside the hundred foot area. There's requirements there too. Um, to meet. I don't know if you're aware of that and I haven't seen a plan about how you're going to comply with that.
I think, uh, the verbiage there was the, um. Clearing square footage, I believe, ten thousand square feet.
Is that right?
Next, if we ever recall.
I don't.
Tried to get straight that on, uh. Here, uh, A zero-nine, um. Orange hatch of the, uh, square footage area to the, um.
Sorry to interrupt.
Cleared or remain cleared for portions of it.
Bye-bye.
Jack, which section are you looking at specifically?
Well, in article three, section four. B. Two. A.
Okay.
There's that and then. In article eight. Section nineteen. D as in dog. D two. Because the shoreline, the shoreline zone is two hundred. Is up to two hundred and fifty feet from the high watermark. So it has requirements outside of the hundred foot zone. For cutting of trees, for cutting and clearing and removal of trees.
I, I have a question for you on Jack, that, on that, Jack.
Yeah.
I, I, I've watched a, a structure go up, um, at the north end of the lake. Um. Towards the weather vane that they took. All kinds of trees down that's not two hundred and fifty feet from the water.
Yeah, I saw that.
Are they, they, are they in the same town that I am trying to permit in?
Yeah, I saw that happen.
Yep.
I don't know whether that was allowed or not. But if you take a look at this section nineteen D two. Says what you can clear. it says what you can clear.
Was that, is that, that's additional from what's already existing there now?
I think so.
Okay, we don't, we'd only be cutting back four or five trees to make it happen.
You're only cutting four or five trees?
I don't know. I can, I can, we can go out and mark them, but the majority of the area to be built is already cleared.
Well, perhaps you could take a look at those sections that Jack is referencing.
Sure.
And then come back and explain to us the proposal as it relates to those sections.
Where specifically are you, are you asking, Jack? So I know, so we know.
Well, the two sections I refer to, whether you comply with those sections or whether they don't apply to you for some reason.
So are you asking what the sections are?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, so it is Article three, section four, B two A and B. And then Article eight, section nineteen D.
Is that something you could read off? Would you confirm we're in compliance or do you need it as part of the package?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Is that, would you be able to read those sections off? Would you confirm or?
Read, read the section?
No, it's long.
Okay, all right, all right.
Yeah, the content is lengthy.
Okay.
And then the, the other question I have is a more fundamental question about the size of the structure. What size is the current structure there?
The, the structure is two thousand square feet, I believe. Jack, if, if you look at where is the, we are allowed twenty percent impervious structure. Is that correct for the town ordinance?
You can't exceed twenty percent.
Correct. And and if you look at the calculation on page A ten, we are at fifteen point nine, Jack.
That, that's the, that's the lot coverage issue.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, I was talking about the size of it. About how our ordinance works because if you have a two thousand square foot house that you're taking down, when I look at the ordinance, it seems like you're, you're wanting to reconstruct or replace the two thousand square foot house, but you're wanting to replace it with a house that's forty-six hundred square feet. And I'm not sure that that's allowed because you are reconstructing.
Yep, we meet, we meet the, the setback inside the seventy-five to one hun, one hundred foot. We don't exceed the twenty-five foot height. And we don't exceed the impervious soil.
The, the area between seventy-five and a hundred feet is to be avoided if possible. And so we're supposed to look at the greatest practical extent to see whether or not the structure could be located at greater than a hundred feet. This, the area between seventy-five and a hundred feet is not to be built on except as an exception if you can otherwise meet the requirements of the ordinance. So I'm wondering why you couldn't build a house that's a hundred feet back from the road, from the water body. And that is the same size or greater than the size of your current structure. Why does it have to be, why do you have to take up any area within the seventy-five to a hundred foot area?
And I, I think just, just to, you know, to bring us back to where we left this conversation last spring, I, I think that's the the discussion that we got into at that point about the size and location of the structure as Jack is pointing out. Because the, the ordinance, just to expand a little bit on what Jack was, was discussing, the ordinance requires that if you are replacing a structure, that you must meet the setbacks to the greatest extent practical. And there, there is you know, an approach to how the planning board determines that in the ordinance. The setback for a structure from the lake, the actual setback is a hundred feet. In cases where there is an expansion of a non-conforming structure proposed, which is what we have here. Those standards that you referenced in section four A, those do apply, but nevertheless, there still needs to be a demonstration that the setbacks have been met to the greatest extent practical. So I think that's the difference. And then in addition, there is the lot coverage issue, and I don't think there's any question about that. I did see that on your plan.
I when I look at this, so if you, if you took your existing structure, let's say it's two thousand square feet, and you could put it, let's say you could put it behind a hundred square, a hundred foot limit. We would say do that. If, if you couldn't reconstruct a two thousand square foot house back a hundred feet, because when we look at the greatest extent practical, there's the slope of the land and things like that. We might say, okay, then you can put up to fifteen hundred square feet within the seventy-five to a hundred foot zone and put the other five hundred feet or, or more back beyond a hundred feet. But what you're doing is taking a two hundred, a two thousand square foot house, and you're saying, well, we can't meet the setbacks because now we want to build a forty-six hundred square foot house. Well, what if you wanted to build, if you wanted to build a ten thousand square foot house, would that mean that you could fill in this twenty-five to seventy-five foot area too? Because
You're taking to a bit of an extreme here, and I, I think the Morashes are trying to meet the setbacks, the greatest practical extent. Now, I mean, I guess you could define that, but I, I would argue that the town can't define the programming for a residence. So you're saying that they don't need five bedrooms, they need three. They don't need a garage, they need, need a car.
No, I'm not doing that. I'm just saying they, they're, they're, they're asking to reconstruct a two thousand square foot house, which is fine. That's their right to reconstruct. Their house burned down. They want to reconstruct their two thousand square foot house.
They're asking to build a new structure on the property.
But they're asking to build one that's double the size, more than double the size.
Well, yeah, that's, it's within the allotted footprint and
No, but they're asking, they're asking for an exception to occupy the area between seventy-five and a hundred.
No, we already have a structure that is two thousand square feet, fourteen feet from the water.
Right.
Also, there's no foundation under that structure right now. So a lot of that square footage in the new existing house is a basement.
Right, but it's over six feet high. So we count it as living space.
I'm six foot eight, so you know, I wouldn't fit in anything else, but so.
So anyway, I, I think that's an issue. About whether or not
What's an issue? Is this being recorded, Chip?
Yes.
What's, what's an issue? The size of the house? We don't violate any of the setbacks at present.
The, the, the relevant setback is that the, you know, the requirement, the standard requirement is that structures be a hundred feet from the lake. That is the setback requirement. And then there are these special circumstances that we were talking about with regard to replacement and expansion of non-conforming structures.
And, and we, we are trying to move and benefit the lake by moving the structure that, removing the structure that's fourteen feet from the water, moving it back to seventy-five feet from the water, starting in building fifteen hundred square feet and then building a livable house that we can retire in. That's what we're trying to do, nothing more that meets all the setbacks, height requirements, all of it. And, and put a new septic system in.
I guess I'm stuck on the hundred foot thing, Paula. I mean, the requirement is a hundred foot setback, right? That's the requirement.
That's correct.
So, Mr. Morash, I don't understand why you're saying you meet the setback requirements. Your, your property is not meeting the setback requirement as it currently is plotted for us. I believe that's correct. I'm not arguing with you. I understand your purpose and mission, and I think it's great you're trying to do this. But I'm, 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 I don't understand you, why, why that is not being that particular point. Are you asking for an exception to the ordinance? Is that what you're really asking for? Which is fine. You could ask for that exception. I'm just trying to understand specifically. You keep saying you meet all the requirements, but we're telling you, you don't. And so I'm just trying to understand why, why that is.
The old ordinance allowed you to build fifteen hundred square feet if you had a pre-existing structure inside of that seventy-five zero to zero to the water, which we presently do. And we, we said we wanted to keep with the original ordinance, which we have, and where we want to make good use of that fifteen hundred square feet and keep you know, part of the structure close to the water. We have a place that's fourteen feet from water right now.
Henry, the part, part of the, you know, part of the issue here is that, that the the replacement being in compliance with all requirements of the ordinance to the greatest practical extent. So it's the greatest practical extent standard. It is possible that in some cases there may be some portion of a structure within the seventy-five to a hundred foot mark, but it, it, the way the ordinance is, is structured, it would be in situations where there can be a demonstration that the setback, which is a hundred feet, has been, it's been achieved to the greatest extent practical. And so that determination needs to be made as part of this discussion before you can get to that, that fifteen hundred square foot portion of a structure within that zone.
So, I mean, if he wanted to build a six, if he said, I want to place my two thousand square foot house with a six thousand square foot house, so I want to put a thousand square feet within the fifty to seventy-five and fifteen hundred square feet within the seventy-five to a hundred. So that's twenty-five hundred, and then I'll do thirty-five hundred beyond that, beyond the hundred. We'd say, well, why do you, why do you, you could build a, your existing house is two thousand square feet, and you could put your two thousand square foot house reconstructed behind the hundred foot setback. There's no reason why you can't do, it's a replacement of a existing structure. The existing structure is two thousand square feet.
Yeah, therefore you're limited by the lot size and the proportions of the lot in order to, in order to the, in theory, the maximum expansion potential of any structure that you put on that lot. I guess that's what we're saying, right?
I think the limiting factor is the setback.
Right, right, within the setback, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, looking at the plots, I guess, I guess then, you know, looking for, looking for further discussion on the greatest practical extent, right? Like what's, what's possible to be done within, within the structure of size.
And, you know, Henry, I'd, I'd point out that, you know, some of this conversation we're having is, you know, formed the the basis and the rationale for making the new ordinance much clearer in this regard. I mean, what you can and can't do. Because this is the kind of situation that you can get into.
Yep. Yep. We do so many applications and so many things. It's been a very busy year, Mr. Morash, so I apologize if some of this seems repetitive to you from before.
We're still under the old guidelines, right? You still fall under that, correct? Yes, your application came in under the old ordinance, and, and yes, we're, we're looking at the, at the old ordinance language. Correct. So, I mean, I don't, I don't want, you know, to get completely stuck on this, this evening, because again, our primary purpose was to make sure that we had the information we needed and to give the Morashes and their consultant any information that we could about material that we might need to proceed next time. So our expectation had not been that we would, you know, deliberate on the application tonight, but we did want to share thoughts that planning board members had, concerns that we might have, so that you can consider if and how you might want to address those.
Give it a precedence on how to demonstrate practical extent. I just say, I understand where the town's coming from, and then you know, with, with the existing building being under seventy-five feet from the high watermark, that does allow us to use the fifteen hundred square feet based on the old ordinance. So I guess like the you know, have precedence on how to demonstrate practical extent. We might try to do that the next meeting.
You know, with other applications where we've talked about, you know, achieving setbacks and, and standards to the greatest practical extent, we've talked a lot about limitations of the, of the property, you know, the circumstances. You know, you're not able to achieve a particular setback because of the extreme slope of the land or the location of the septic system or you know, a, a stand of trees that, that wouldn't allow you to construct in a particular location. So it usually is focused on those types of, of
And we've all, we've brought all of those up in the past. If you look at the slope of the land, you know, on I mean, a lot of you have walked this property and seen what we're up against as far as the slope there. And the trees in the back. We're trying to limit how much we, we do have to take down and not, you know, build up into the hill.
And, you know, as I recall from last spring, you know, part of our conversation did, did focus at that time on, you know, the nature of the structure, the size of the structure. So that, I mean, this isn't, this isn't a completely new issue. This issue did come up. And I think we had, you know, requested that you go back and, and take a look at your plan to see if you might be able to make some modifications that would bring us closer to where we felt we needed to be.
Yeah, but at, at the time, we believed that that was in, in we're in ordinance with the, or focused on, on the, the fact that we weren't meeting the setbacks. We do now meet the rear setback, front setback, and the, to the old ordinance, the fif, the fifteen hundred square foot allowable inside seventy-five to a hundred square feet.
Well, you know, again, I would reiterate that the, the setback from the lake is, is a hundred feet.
So I, I'm, I'm starting to, to feel that the town feels it would be better that we leave the structure where it is at the fourteen feet with the, with the septic system that's fifty years old where it is, and, and that would be better off. And not trying to improve the road or any of that, and just perhaps rebuild this, rebuild the structure internally from, you know, where it's at.
Yeah. I, I wouldn't read that into this discussion. I don't think anyone has said that, you know.
And then I, and well, realistically, that's, that's, you know, that's what I'm hearing. And, and I guess then at that point, what I could do is just at a hundred feet back, build a garage and, and then, you know, ask uh, at a hundred feet back, build a garage and and then, you know, ask for, you know, just go to and chip and get get a permit because I just build the garage there, and that would be better for the town, rather than taking a structure carefully, taking it down, putting up a new structure at seventy-five feet, and that meets all other criteria and improve the the septic and the the, you know, runoff and all that thing, all those involved, which we've gone into great detail with.
And, you know, and I I don't think that any of us, um, um, don't think that many of the improvements that you're proposing aren't valuable, because they they certainly are. We would not, we would not argue with that. I I am, I am thinking that, um, I have a couple of questions, I think, for, um, for the town's attorney that might be, that might be helpful to all of us. And I'm thinking that perhaps in the interim between meetings, um, I may try to have a conversation with her uh, to see, seek some clarity around a couple of things in the ordinance. Um, you know, we're not going to reach resolution tonight. And again, um, you know, our purpose was to see what information we had in front of us, and if there were issues that needed to be explored further, or if there were other pieces of information we needed, um. So I think we've, you know, identified some of the concerns with this application. Um, I do think I may follow up with some some questions uh, with with the town attorney, but I would also suggest, uh, that you take a look at the provisions of the ordinance that we identified to see whether or not, um, there's anything else that you can offer in terms of information that would allow us to make a decision. You know, I I, um, I'd look to planning board members to hear, um, now if if your wish is to move ahead with a public hearing, um, or not at this point. I mean, we certainly can. But there are some outstanding questions that I think that, you know, would need to be responded to before we did that. Jack, have you got any thoughts on that?
Well, it seems like we need to resolve the road issue, the cutting issue, and then the the, um, size of the house issue. And I don't think we could really have a public hearing till we had those pieces figured out, because the public wouldn't know what we're really doing, particularly with the size of the house. So it seems like we should continue this after we get more clarity on those issues and the, you know, after you have have a discussion with the town attorney about the size of the house issue.
Well, perhaps if, um, um, Mr. and Mrs. Morash and 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 Justin, if you could pursue the, uh, the issue of the road and the cutting issue, uh, the two provisions in the ordinance that we we cited for you um, to see what clarification you can provide in that regard. And, um, I will have a conversation with the town attorney. And then we can see where where the situation is. Noel, did you?
Yeah, just I have a statement slash question for, uh, the applicants. Um, you're you're not going to find that I'm going to disagree with Annie in the statements that she made really about what's better for the town. I definitely think of the choices out there, this is probably, um, kind of a net positive, but, you know, we have to follow the rules that the townspeople approved, and that setback is is one of, um. And I understand, I don't, I think your, the size of the house is is pretty reasonable, um, and, you know, in the average of single-family dwellings, but is there no way that it could be smaller or a different shape in which it wouldn't violate the hundred-foot setback? Or are you guys pretty set on that?
Well, I I gotta be honest with you, and and I'm going to be. We have a place that's fourteen feet from the water right now. We have two decks, a lower deck that you can walk out on, an upper deck you can walk out and watch the 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 moonrise, the sunrise, and we honestly feel that we are, uh, giving up a quite quite a bit of that by moving back to seventy-five feet.
Oh, I completely agree. And I think if you, you can add to the your current structure and change it and within all the rules and and that would probably be worse for the lake. Um, then worse for the tax base than than your proposal. But that being said, you know, there's that, you know, setback. What is there? Are you saying that, like, this is the only kind of size and shape that that you can put there and and at this moment?
Right now, um, the existing structure does not have a foundation under it. So we have two stories of living space. This new structure is one main floor of living space with the basement underneath, and we don't have a garage right now either to live, you know, to live there permanently. It's a camp.
Right.
Um, it's not, nothing permanent.
It has a.
So there's no garage, um, which, you know, as we all know with Maine winters. No.
You need a garage. I I, in the in this existing structure, we have a spiral staircase that goes upstairs, okay? The spiral staircase is not going to be good. I'm sixty-one right now, okay? I want to make sure that I can enjoy this. I'm putting an elevator in the in the structure to, so I can die in this structure ideally. So drive in and then be able to go up to the second floor and and, you know, a spiral staircase is not going to work well for me at that. And we want to be able to drive into the garage and then, you know, wheel over someone in a wheelchair and and get upstairs. And all of that fits inside the land use ordinance at present. And I've, and I lived, I lived there during the summer. I lived there a lot during the rest of the year. I see other structures that were built there in in not the that far distant time that were right up next to the lake, and you made them move them back, and they, you allowed the same thing that I'm doing right now.
So I think the Noel's, uh, point, um, you know, the the more actually spent decent amount of time developing, uh, this layout. Um, so while there is always, uh, an infinite amount of options, uh, this layout's been pursued because it meets all their future needs. Um, so the request is for this footprint.
We have, we have two daughters, uh, two grandmothers that we would like to be able to to have up there at a Christmas or a Thanksgiving. This will allow us to do that.
So, I mean, as as you're considering this question, I mean, the bottom, the bottom line question in terms of the ordinance is, um, are you and how are you achieving to the greatest practical extent the setback requirements? And the setback in question is the hundred feet from the lake. So, um, that greatest practical extent determination needs to be applied to that. And under any circumstance, the planning board would have to, um, would have to address that and draw some conclusion about that standard.
So, yeah, and the greatest practical extent in my mind is is, you know, I'm not, look, this is, this could be looked at from multiple perspectives, but historically, there's precedent and it it's, the greatest practical extent is not about your needs, Mr. Morash. It's about the land use. So, you know, the property itself, the physical property, what's the greatest practical extent possible related to the property? It's not about what you're trying to accomplish. It's about what 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 is possible on the land, right? That's how I look at, that's how I I would interpret that. And that's how we've applied it before. So if the land allows it to occur, then you have to come up with an argument. It's your, it's upon the applicant or its consultants to come up with an argument that, um, it's the greatest, and it may be, you may, you may be meeting that greatest extent practical, but there's no, there's no way for us to determine that, you know.
So what I, what what I I I think what I'll do is I'll is I'll go around to to people that have built on the same shores myself and and uh, go get their plans and where their structure were and now, and then what they built, and that then you'll have the precedent that you've you have, you folks have approved in in the in the, uh, in the past.
Well, I think our, um, I think the the outline of the foot building footprint, um, shows practical extent, um, the triangular, it's a lot. Uh, the more actions have added corners to the buildings, corners cost money, keep his buildings a rectangle. Um, so if you look at building footprint, uh, the additional corners is additional cost, but was there to be the the practical extent of the site?
What's the distance? What's the distance from the proposed new structure from the proposed new road section?
Uh, I think it's fifty-five feet.
So, under our new ordinance,
It doesn't matter under the old one.
No, but wait a second. Under our new ordinance, if you moved back a hundred feet, which means twenty-five feet more away from the water, under our new ordinance, you might be allowed to move twenty-five feet closer to the road. As we can reduce the setback, the non-water body setback by fifty percent, I think.
So I I've got to ask the question to the to the the board. If you had a structure that was fourteen feet from the water and in the twenty years you you've been there, you've seen other structures just like what you had been moved back to the greatest practical extent, kind of. And, you know, most properties fifty, sixty feet from the water, and then they built, you know, their structure very close to the same size or larger than the same size that I'm trying to do. Is it fair to ask us to move to back to a hundred feet from fourteen feet from the water with two thousand square feet? Is that fair?
You know, I don't, I don't think that that is, you know, a determination that, you know, that that we could make, nor is it one that, um, that's really appropriate. I mean, we're not, we're not determining fairness by comparing one property to another. We're looking at the at the provisions of the ordinance. Um, you know, there there have been other applications and other circumstances where, um, buildings have been, uh, have been moved or reconstructed, and we've applied the standard to them. I I don't remember, um, the details of all of those, but I think we certainly have always tried to apply the standard, um, fairly and and consistently.
I think you should take a look at our new ordinance, because I think you could put this house a hundred feet back from the water and twenty-five feet from the road setback, which I think is allowable under the new ordinance.
We were told we had to get a variance for fifty feet back from.
Not under the new ordinance.
Yeah, there is, there is provision in the in the new ordinance for for making, um, making some modifications, um, to ensure that the water body setbacks are maximized, but allowing more encroachment on other setback features like the road or side setbacks or something of that sort, um, in order to maximize water body setbacks.
It looks like it would work. Now, I don't know, you know, about the condition of the land twenty-five feet, you know, further back, but you would meet all the requirements of the ordinance, it looks like.
What allows a maximum size of fifteen hundred square feet?
No, you can build your, the house that you want to build, because you'd be beyond a hundred feet.
And with a a existing structure at fourteen feet, two thousand square feet inside of at fourteen feet, it's fair to for us to move that all the way back to a hundred feet and like I I didn't even come to you people and just go to the code enforcement and just build it.
Well, you'd still need.
That's fair to the to town of Reed Field resident that's paid taxes for twenty years there.
You'd still need permission from the planning board to do that, because it's an exception. But it's an allowable exception. So I'm just saying you should take a look at it.
And we we will all.
To build your sixty-five, your whatever your house is, forty-six hundred square feet or whatever it is, you could build it a hundred feet, you could build a bigger house if you want. But we can only reduce the setback to the road by fifty percent. So if it's fifty feet, we can reduce it down to twenty-five feet. So that would be the limiting factor. So just moving the house back. And then you wouldn't be in the hundred, the seventy-five to a hundred foot zone at all. It'd still be reviewed by the planning board. There'd still be the issue of the trees and the road, but you wouldn't have a setback issue most likely.
I I am seeing, oh.
Can imagine how frustrated we are. This is going on two years, and we keep trying to.
Two years.
And it's just really frustrating.
Yeah.
Well, this order.
And we're trying to do the right things, and I have seen, like I said, the structure that's up by the north end of the lake that they put in, it's wide open to the lake, and they cut continually cut trees on that piece of property. The piece over on the right-hand side, um, near, uh, the Riley property, they clear cut all the way up to the, the, you know, from the lake. How has that been addressed?
I personally wasn't aware of that, but I would ask the town to, uh, get back to me, get back to the board on that, because I think that's, you know.
What what I will do is I'm gonna go get the the precedents as as, you know, was discussed, and I'm gonna go see what the precedent has been in the past on these, this same type of thing that I'm looking at. We're looking to present to you the bill.
It it's possible that those those trees were cut for other reasons or with within certain certain rules that, you know, we're not, we're not thinking about right at this moment, but it would be good just to check that. I would agree as a town, we should, we should be looking at that. But anyway, regardless, Paul, I think, I don't know, um, I don't think we're ready for a public hearing. I would echo Jack's concern, um, earlier. I think it would be good, though, to have the applicant, um, take a look at the new ordinance, compare that, maybe their consultant here, Justin, can help help them through that process. Um, and then maybe, uh, think about, you know, the sort of, uh, uh, best and final, if you will, quote unquote, version of the application that, you know, they think will, uh, meet meet the requirements of the ordinance. And then and then I think we just proceed through that process. Um, but I don't think we're ready to proceed that process until the applicant has fully digested the content of this conversation and and had an opportunity to look at the ordinance and make sure that what they present is something that they're comfortable with us so pinning on.
Can you give us some guidance on how we plan for greatest practical extent? And we're.
In the new ordinance, it's Article Three, Section Four E two, which you might want to take a look at in the brand. which you might want to take a look at, in the brand new ordinance that was adopted November second.
So, I, I'm, I'm getting the feeling that in, in, even though the, the previous ordinance, there was the allowance for fifteen hundred square feet from seventy-five to a hundred square feet, that, it, it's what I'm hearing from some of the board members right now is you, you don't want to allow any of that at this point. Even with a pre-existing two thousand foot structure.
It wasn't a situation where the setback became seventy-five feet as long as you didn't exceed fifteen hundred. Um, it, it, it was never that simple, even under the old ordinance. I mean, again, the standard has always been a hundred feet back from the lake. Um, however, um, if it's a situation where you're, you know, reconstructing or, um, replacing in some way, um, it was a matter of demonstrating that setbacks were met, including a hundred feet from the lake to the greatest practical extent. Um, and in some cases, if that demonstration is made, um, up to fifteen hundred square feet, could theoretically be between the seventy-five and the hundred foot mark if the demonstration about greatest practical extent, um, is made. But it, it was never as, as simple as just, you know, seventy-five feet was never the setback for a small structure or a portion of a structure. It was under that circumstance where the demonstration was made. So, uh, you know, um, you know, Henry, Henry just, um, you know, outlined, um, his thoughts about going back and looking at these issues and then reconvening, um, to see where it is, um, what everyone's thoughts are. I think we all have some, some homework to do. Um, we can take a closer look at this, um. I think, Jack, we could take a, you know, a, do a, do an actual calculation and see what the provision of the new ordinance would, would do specifically, um, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm curious about that. But what you described was really the reason why we included that in the new ordinance, um, to give that kind of opportunity uh, to stay away from the lake, but in so doing and maximizing that distance from the lake may be deviating from some of the other setbacks, um, and it may be a situation where that could work in this situation. And give you a structure that did in fact just meet the setback requirements. So basically, we need to look at the road issues and the trees issues and you're basically saying that we need to come up with a smaller structure at this point?
No, I, I'm saying if you look at the new ordinance, the way it works is if you're moving from fourteen feet to a hundred feet back, that's an improvement of eighty-six feet, which gives you eighty-six feet to work with in the other set, in the other setbacks, the side and the road. And you can reduce any setback by up to fifty percent as long as the total reduction that you're making doesn't exceed what you're moving back from the lake, the eighty-six feet. So if you reduce the road setback by twenty-five feet, you still have an, you could reduce the side setbacks too if you wanted to. And you need, there's some other requirements, but I think those would be met. So I'm saying that you can build your house, your, the house that you propose just twenty-five feet back.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into it, it's, uh, it'll be an option, we're only going into the over the hundred foot setback, uh, fifteen feet, so. Yeah, while we have fifteen hundred square feet in that area past the hundred mark, we're really only hanging over the, the deck hangs over it, so. Um, Donna Scott, we can look at pushing that back. And review the, the ordinance, see how that might.
So, so where we've come is we've come to answer that question of is it fair for, to be at fourteen feet from the water and, and move it back to a hundred squ- a hundred feet from the water, that it is fair?
So like Justin just mentioned, um, a lot of that square footage that's within the fifteen hundred square foot is a deck.
Well, I mean, three hundred, but they, it does the floor area, uh, I believe, um, that does, that does count towards.
It, it, yes, it does. I mean, what Jack is describing, um, that was included in the new ordinance was designed in large part to give people credit, if you will, for pulling back from the lake. Um, allowing some flexibility in terms of location of structures uh, based on how far back from the lake, um, a, a replacement structure was going to be. So it's really designed for that purpose, um, yeah, we're moving back at least sixty-two feet, I think, at least now. So I, I absolutely think it would be worth a look, um, if you, you know, take a look at that new provision and just, just see, how it would work, um, under your circumstances, um, I think it would be important to take a look at that, um, as a possible option anyway. Um, I will consult with the town attorney about a couple of things just to make sure that, um, you know, we're all on the same page and we're clear, um, on some of these provisions. And, um, then there was the, uh, the issue of the road and the, um, uh, the cutting. Is there anything else that anyone mentioned that I didn't include in that list? Okay, so if you could, um, you know, communicate through Chip and, um, he can let us know where things stand and when we would want to, uh, to come back for another conversation. Uh, Justin, do you have something else?
Oh, just saying, we will do, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, keep checking, tipping the.
Okay, uh, planning board members, um, any other comments or questions? Issues? Questions for the more actions?
Is the discussion with the lawyer gonna be shared with us?
Uh, yes, yes. Yes, I will definitely share whatever comes from that. Okay, anything else, anyone? Mr. and Mrs. Marash, did you have any, any additional comments you wanted to make before we, before we break?
No.
Okay, well, thank you very much, um, I know, um, I know that, um, it's been frustrating for you and I, I regret that, but, um, see what we can do, uh, with these possible options and we'll come back and have another conversation about it. So we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Okay, are we ready to leave that issue? Anybody else? Missed up? Okay.
Well, so.
Right. Um, okay, we do have a couple of sets of, um, minutes to review, um, I don't know if, um, you've all had opportunity to look at the minutes that just came around today or not? No?
I, I haven't, sorry, Paula.
Okay, um, I, I know they were pretty short notice, um, I struggled to look at them too.
Yeah, I did take a look, but not as thoroughly as I'd like to.
Yeah, um.
The, um, the Board of Appeals is meeting the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, and, you know, theoretically, we would, um, we would have a meeting, uh, that week, that Tuesday, and the appeals board meets on the Thursday. So we could have them reviewed and approved prior to the appeals board meeting.
Um, we could send them the draft.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a good idea, we could do that, uh, make sure they understand it's a draft. Tell them that we will review and approve on the, whatever, uh, twenty-fifth, I think the date is. And, um, and they'll meet on the twenty-seventh.
I looked through them, they look good.
Yeah, I, I had, I had some comments, um. I didn't feel like I had much time though, I just, I just did it late this afternoon and I was kind of went through them quickly, um. But they did look pretty good, all things considered, yes. Okay, so everyone comfortable with that plan? We'll share a draft, let them know that we'll review and approve at the next meeting.
Paula, can I say something real quick? This is Holly.
Oh, uh, yes, please.
Um, I don't know if you saw my email, but they had asked me, the town office is so shorthanded, they'd asked me to do the minutes for September twenty-eighth and November third, which was the Bob Bittar thing that the appeals board will be considering. And I don't know if you guys had, have received those draft minutes. I, I don't know that Kristen's had time to send them to you, I could.
She sent them this afternoon, Holly, and that's, that's why we haven't had, um, you know, not everyone has had time to review them because they just came today.
Oh, okay, okay, alright.
But we do have them now, so.
I see.
You did a good job.
Oh, thanks, it was.
Yes, you did, Holly, thank you.
Well, actually, it kind of saves me some personal time because I'm on the appeals board, so I would have had to read it all anyway, so.
Okay, um. Anything else, anyone?
Um, I know we're keeping track of, um, things to, um, update in the ordinance.
Yes.
Um, and I just wanted to, I don't know who's keeping that list.
It's right here in front.
You have a list, oh, how, how, how efficient of you, I'm so excited that somebody has a look. Uh, one of those things is the state recently, since we passed the solar, I mean, the, uh, yeah, the solar ordinance, the state has passed a, uh, some law, uh, specifically really related to decommissioning.
Right.
And I wanted to make sure that we weren't in conflict with that law, and I also wanted to make sure that, uh, we probably incorporated it at least by either reference or maybe we even just eliminate that section of the ordinance because we don't want to be in conflict. So, that, that's sort of, you know, this is gonna happen with it, but I think it is something we should address because if we do get an application, it will probably be in conformance with the state law related to the decommissioning process now that that exists.
Right, it is added to the list. Did you get my email today, by the way, Henry?
Uh, no, I didn't.
Okay, all right, I, I forwarded you, um, an inquiry from a woman at Maine Farmland Trust. Uh, that Chip had sent to me, and she was, uh, I don't remember exactly what the project is she's working on, but it has to do with municipal ordinances and providing guidance, I think, to municipalities on the use of agricultural land, prime agricultural land for solar projects and so forth, and she was looking to talk to someone in Reed Field about the solar ordinance. So I forwarded that to you and asked if you could maybe get in touch with her, since you're a resident ex.
Apparently now I'm becoming the point person, um, but I'm happy, I'm happy to, um, en- engage with her, I'll respond to her and you together, uh, without the forward to you, so you can just see that I've done it. Um, and then, um, I did, I did get invited to the town of Belgrade's discussion, which I think I mentioned to you last time, related to their solar ordinance, which was, which we had, which was basically just, uh, their, um, exploratory process about developing an ordinance and they're, they're a little further behind the top, the, the, the situation there in developing it, so.
We're gonna call you Mr. Sunshine.
One item Paula just brought up for you, Henry, that's just an informational one, that's a, uh, student or somebody that's doing a little bit of research, so that's nothing that affects us right now. We did also get information with Paula, I ran by Paula and, um, others, so others that, uh, we, they have to, uh, redo the, uh, decommissioning bond, and not redo it, but update with what you said, the decommissioning bond. So right now, Syncarfa is in the process of doing that. Once they do that, they'll send it to us for us to review, make sure it's okay, and then that should be their last step. The last piece is, is that court case was one, I believe, yesterday to, or today, which is gonna move a lot of these ahead a lot quicker in terms of how, um, the utilities hook these up, uh, quicker, it's changing the regulations on that end. So Syncarfa is also on that and sent me that, uh, legal opinion, which really, right now, we can't do it, we're not gonna do anything with. That's on hooking up the utilities, what we'll be involved in is the, uh, updated, uh, decommissioning bond that we've already approved is gonna be updated, so that's what's going on now.
Interesting, thank you for sharing that information. I, I would also, uh, add another, uh, uh, n- newsworthy item, perhaps along the same lines, that, um, um, there is some case law that developed after the town approved the Syncarfa application that, um, does not allow solar app, solar field applications to be defined as essential services. They must be reviewed under the commercial industrial standards of public ordinance.
Oh, really? That's interesting.
There was a lot of challenge to that and, um, that happened and I have the reference somewhere, I can find it, but that, that may, um, tha- that may be helpful to communities that did not have or don't have an ordinance, um, currently, um. And interestingly, May, you know, I'm sure Syncarfa would not bring that up, of course, to us, but, uh, I think it's something worth noting, um, I don't think probably meaningfully changes it, but it does add, it does add, um, a lot more of, um, what, you know, if we didn't have an ordinance, which we now do, but, you know, it does add a lot more criteria for communities to look at usually.
Can you send that a- around to me?
Yeah, I'll try and find that, Jack, um, I was also very interested in it myself, it was sent to me by a solid developer, uh, friend of mine, so.
Okay, thanks.
It's a wild west world out there, let me tell you.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else?
Um.
Oh.
Chip, I sent you a version of the land use ordinances with that signature on it, that people can Ctrl F and search for the website, you know, you said that you didn't think that, that it could be searchable, but I, uh.
We sent out, we sent out a word document which is said, um, searchable for you all, you should have received. Plus, the searchable PDF has been, I believe, placed on the, uh, town website now, and in addition, in your mailboxes is a hard copy that's been signed and stamped, so you have three versions now.
So, how long do we have to go, come in and sign the plat plan?
It's, it's here, available here, when you want, eight to five, it'll be on this table right here.
So we should, you know, we should do it this week. Um.
I can't get there till, uh, Friday morning, but I can do it on Friday morning.
Yeah, I'll be on Thursday at some point.
Paula, how many copies would you like signed or should be signed? I, I asked for three.
Um, I, I don't really know, Chip. Um, I, I don't really know, Chip, what past practice has been in that regard.
Well, if you'd be also trying to sign three, we'll have three and we got what we need then.
Okay. And you'll leave the, there's a particular kind of marker you, you need to use on those.
Yeah.
So can you leave the marker out on the table with the plans?
I will do such.
Okay.
Well, now that I'm a, gonna be a full-on board member, I feel like I'm gonna need an orientation because I did not know there was a mailbox for myself. So that's probably stuff in there.
Probably not too much. Usually what winds up in the mailboxes are hard copies of applications and you know, to the extent that Chip is making hard copies of those things. So there may be some that have in your box.
By the way, it says that the final plan show consists of a Mylar, four Mylar copies containing all necessary conditions, modifications and waivers approved by the planning board. So it says four Mylar. I think. I don't think it matters.
Yeah.
Back on the making the land use ordinance on the website easily accessible for people and readable. The, the one that's on there right now, it's a scan of a printed document. The one that I had sent you is the word document saved as a PDF. And so you can search, people can search it for keywords and whatnot.
No, I, I understand that. And according to Eric, who scanned it in with a PDF maker allowing that, he tells me that that's what it is. I will check on that tomorrow.
But if you just use that, if you send whoever updates the website, if you just forward them that one I sent you, that's, that's the signed one that you sent us. But I just, I just want to make sure people can, you know, easily look through it. It's like those people, you know, say they should go to search for the section numbers and stuff like that. They can readily find it.
You're right.
Anything else? Anyone?
Paul, just wanted to, Jack, what about the other two minutes? November 9th and December 14th?
We don't have those.
Okay, all right. I, I couldn't find them, so.
Yeah.
Start on the agenda.
Yeah, we have, yeah, it was on the agenda, but they don't exist. So yeah, we have the.
They do exist. I, I could.
Oh, they exist, but we don't have them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just the two that came out today are queued up at this point. Okay, thank you all. Good night. We'll see you next time. I'll be in touch if there's any information about the Morash application in particular that we need to have and Chip, I assume you'll let us know if there's any movement on that.
As soon as I hear anything, you'll be the first to know.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good night.
Night, everybody. Stay warm.